And we're on. And good morning, everyone. This giant crowd we've got today. Let's see. So, welcome, everybody, to the Pinellas Board of -- or the County Board of Supervisors, January 12, 2022. We are in session. I would let you know that Supervisor Goodman will be arriving late. He's on the telephone presently, I believe.
Supervisor Goodman?
I'm here. Thank you.
We can see you. Okay. Let's see. Item number one, presentation and update on the Boyce-Thompson Arboretum. Lynn Nameth, is that correct? Or I'm sorry.
It's actually Nameth, as in Joe.
As in Joe.
As in Joe. No relation. I've been asked that many, many times during my lifetime. Thank you all for having me here today. And also, thank you for your support of Boyce-Thompson Arboretum. The reason why I asked to come here today is because there have been so many changes at the Arboretum, and I just wanted to update you. We believe that we're one of the largest attractions, if not the largest attraction, in Pinellas County. We had 120,000 visitors last year. So, you're shaking your head, Mr. Surti. The Renaissance Festival?
The Renaissance Festival gets more, and I think the Ghost Town gets more.
Really?
But that's good. Let's bump those numbers up this year.
Yes. Well, we expect that in about three years, we're going to be double that, so.
That's what we want to hear.
Yes. So, before I get into the short presentation that I have here, I just wanted to let you know that we are no longer a state park. I think many of you probably already know that. But -- and we're no longer affiliated with the University of Arizona. We've gone back to our roots as a botanical institution, which is what we were founded as in 1924. So, we are celebrating our 100th anniversary in 2024, which we're really excited about. And we are working with your economic development people on that as well, and public information. So, you are -- we're going to be having Pinellas County participate on our committee, our organizational committee. So, I am aware that many people don't realize that we are who we are and where we are here in Pinellas County. And so, I wanted to come here and let you know. I've been at Boyce-Thompson Arboretum for two and a half years now. I was hired when the split occurred, and we reconfirmed our vision and mission as a botanical garden. So, the first slide that I have up is that we are an arboretum. Arbor is in the word. So, related to trees and shrubs. And we are a scientific and educational organization. So, our mission statement is to inspire appreciation and stewardship of desert plants, wildlife, and ecosystems through education, research, and conservation. And please, if you have any questions, I'm happy to answer them.
At any time?
At any time.
Permission to just, since this is a work session? So, you're no longer affiliated with University of Arizona, but I know the Arboretum was a go-to if any community had a vegetation question or beautification problem. Hey, let's go get the Arboretum's opinion on this. Will you still be able to do that? I was just in Queen Valley, and they want to get a community garden going. Can someone come out and advise them on things like that?
Oh, absolutely. We have a horticulture staff of 14 people that are taking care of our collections and grounds. So, yes, absolutely.
To let them know how to reach you, just call the main number?
Mm-hmm. They can call the main number. They can ask for me. I actually have cards for all of you and guest passes. So, I hope you'll come out and visit. I'm happy to give you a tour. So, yes, we are definitely available as a resource to the community.
Great.
Thank you. So, what many people don't realize is that by the very virtue of our existence, botanical gardens and arboretum are conservation organizations. We're saving plants and making sure that they are known to the public. So, those of you who have been out there know how beautiful it is at Boyce-Thompson Arboretum. So, one of our values that are listed here is beauty. We think of ourselves as an oasis of inspiration. We also believe in stewardship, learning, and community. So, and part of that, as Mr. Surti asked, is being a resource to the community at large. We have a number of programs, tours, walks, activities, events, educational programs. We have a large horticulture department. We manage a number of collections and monitor rare species, and we have a very active volunteer program as well. So, this is probably the most important slide that I have up here. We are the oldest and largest botanical garden in Arizona, had 120,000 visitors last year. We have more than 135 acres of gardens within 343 acres along Queen Creek, more than 20,000 plants, five miles of trails, 275 bird-sighted. And we like to say that we're cooler than Phoenix. So, this is actually an abridged presentation I meant to our new docents, but we are in the Sonoran Desert, obviously. But we're also in the Arizona Upland subdivision. So, we're at 2,500 feet up at the Arboretum, slightly cooler and very biodiverse. So, we are an independent 501(c)(3) nonprofit organization and have been since 1927. We have an operating budget of $3.5 million. Our revenue comes from admissions, membership, sales, contributions, and grants, education programs, events. We have 40 staff people, 500 donors, and 7,300 members. As I mentioned before, we were founded in 1924 by Colonel William Boyce Thompson, who actually founded Magama Copper in Superior and was involved in copper mining throughout this area. So, he made a fortune and then became a philanthropist and started the Arboretum in 1924 and the Boyce-Thompson Institute, which is now at Cornell, also in 1924. We are on the National Register of Historic Places.
Supervisor Miller.
Yes.
Just a quick thing, if you can validate this for me. This Mr. Thompson that founded it is related to a Bill Thompson, who, aka Wallace of the Wallace and Ladmo Show.
Oh, really?
Yes.
I'd -- I -- I'll have to check that out.
Interesting trivia.
Yeah, interesting trivia. I haven't been to the Renaissance, but I haven't -- maybe I've been to the Ghost Town once, but I have a membership. My family, we do a family membership every year.
Wonderful.
But I'm pretty sure about that Bill Thompson, because he did a presentation out there.
I'm going to check that out. So, as I mentioned before, botanical gardens are involved in conservation, and we're essentially living museums. I had a student say to me one time, "Oh, you're like a zoo for plants." And I said, "Yeah, exactly." So, more than 10% of our plants are species of conservation concern, which means that they're threatened with endangerment or extinction. And on the slide here, I have a photo of an Arizona hedgehog. We've been working over the years with ADOT on their building projects to move these endangered species out of the way of road construction and bringing them to the Arboretum. And as you can see, they're really beautiful, gorgeous blossoms.
So, you're a zoo for plants, but nothing eats you, right?
That's not exactly true. We certainly have a zoo for animals, too. Between the javelina and the pack rats, we do have -- our plants do get eaten, so.
I don't want to jump ahead in your presentation, but.
Yes.
There's been a lot of interest in the last several years about butterflies and getting butterfly gardens going. Do you have some kind of a program emphasis on that? And I know there's certain plants that will attract them.
We actually have a pollinator garden. So, and we are establishing ourselves as a monarch waystation, so planting for monarchs. This past year, I'm actually glad you asked that, we had a butterfly survey done. They counted 36 different species and 10,000 butterflies. So, if you recall, after the monsoon rains, there were a huge number of butterflies. I don't think the grill on my car is ever going to get clean. So, but we have a lot of butterflies there and birds as well. So, thank you for asking that. So, we have plant collections representing 12 different countries and deserts from around the world and which serve a great educational purpose. I also want to note that our education programs, which are K through 12, are aligned with the Arizona science standards and the next-generation science standards as well. And we're hoping that this latest COVID uptick is not going to affect our field trips, and so far, it hasn't. So, we're keeping our fingers crossed. We have three nationally accredited collections. And our eucalyptus trees, which is the largest collection of eucalyptus trees in the United States. Desert legumes, which are -- most of the desert trees are actually in the pea family, believe it or not. And then we have a collection of southwest oaks. So, we like to say that all life depends on plants, and it really does, although someone said to me the other day, "Well, you can't have good plants without good soil." So, it's all interconnected. But part of what we want to do is really instill in people the idea of stewardship and also the connections between everything, soil, plants, wildlife, us. And that's my presentation. I do have a couple of things I want to add in terms of our future plans. We're working on a 25-year master plan right now that includes a new visitor center, expanded education programs, more event spaces. So, stay tuned on that. We're also putting in a new irrigation system that's going to be used to, well, obviously, water our plants, but we're really doing it to create efficiencies because our well levels have been going down. So, with the long-term drought that we've been experiencing, we are being challenged like everyone is in Arizona with water. And I think water is on your agenda today, isn't it? So, but we're doing our part in upgrading our systems and automating everything so that we can stay on top of our water use. We've been having a number of audits done about our water use. And so, we're really moving forward and trying to truly conserve what we can, move to more renewable energy sources like solar panels, over-parking lots, and that sort of thing. So, really trying to be a leader in some of the sustainability issues that are going to help the environment and hopefully ultimately reduce our costs. So.
Chairman, if I may. Supervisor Kavanaugh.
Thank you for coming today, and it was a pleasure to have visited the Arboretum, and I learned a lot. I still haven't brought my wife out. I'm sorry.
Well, we're waiting for you.
We will. But do you track how many visitors to the Arboretum are from inside versus outside Pinellas County?
We do. We track zip codes.
And do you have the numbers with you?
I don't have the numbers with me. Where we don't have a -- off the top of my head, the majority of our visitors come from the Mesa area, and then second would be Pinellas County.
And your interactions with our economic development, I hear earlier, you've -- and how's that going? What are you doing to promote the Arboretum in conjunction with our economic development people?
Well, what we've really been concentrating on is the centennial. So, and I believe that our news releases and such are going out as well.
Okay. Do I recall that you had something to do with the Symphony Orchestra? Was that you?
Yes, that was me.
Okay. And just, what was that? Remind me.
Well, I have a -- my first master's degree is in music, classical music. So, but I was the board president of the Flagstaff Symphony Orchestra, and I've also been involved in arts councils and evaluating different arts organizations, including symphonies.
Excellent. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
I just want to, for folks that are watching this online or on the TV, leave yourself more time. I've been there several times, and I've never seen it all, because you start out walking, you intend to see everything, but by the time you're three-quarters of the way through, you just, you know, so it's bigger than you think. When you drive by, it just looks little, but it's just, it goes and goes and goes down there. It's very, there's a lot to see.
There is. So, thank you all very much, and I will keep you all apprised of what we're doing and what our plans are. And please do come and visit, and I'd be happy to give you a personal tour.
Very good. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you very much.
Say hi to Joe, too, when you see him.
Actually, if you have a moment, I had a funny incident one time. I was working in Baltimore, and I answered the phone, and I said, "This is Lynn Nameth." And the man on the end said, "This is Steve Unitas." So, we had a long conversation about Super Bowl III.
Very good. All right. Next on the plate here is presentation, thank you, presentation of website redesign by Mr. Frazier.
Chairman McClear, Vice Chairman Surti, members of the board, thank you for a few minutes today. Got some slides up here, but certainly expecting there'll be a lot of questions. We'll have plenty of time at the end for some questions. Big project with a lot involved, so putting that all into a relatively short presentation a little tough, but I'll try and cover as much as possible. So, in the presentation today, just sharing a few numbers, mostly on our current platform, current website, just so you kind of get a scope of the traffic that hits Pinellas County's website, and it is significant. So, and then, you know, we talk about why redesign, the resources involved in the project, progress as well as the challenges. There have been some. We don't expect those to stop, but I think we've overcome most of them. Moving forward, Phase Two, and then again, plenty of room at the end for questions. So, current website, in the current design, again, we've been on this platform since about '07, but the current design is about 12 years old. Again, there's been some iterations in the middle. It's on a SharePoint platform, contains over 1,800 pages. It's vast. Those are crammed full of a whole bunch of content, which we'll get into in a minute. Over 1.7 million users, 2021. That's, again, that's some pretty good traffic. Of those 1.7 million, 19 million page views within the site for that. And I've got some graphs here to kind of show you. Again, we have Google Analytics as well, some other tools hooked up to the website that kind of give us some insight into traffic. So, you see the users there, and the page views are a couple that we watch heavily as well as the session duration, which is still really pretty good in pages per session. A lot of that gives you some insight, along with some other tools of how navigation and things like that are working. So, and then also, I mean, maintaining about, you know, over 60% returning users. And you got to figure, a lot of those are businesses and things using some of the tools we put out, Cessor Search and Sheriff's Office being two biggest websites hit. So, again, you kind of see the top three visited sites at the county there. And again, it kind of gives a breakdown of that, those 17 or 18 million page views of how they fall there. The sheriff's site, just to let you know, a lot of that is running, those numbers go up by the inmate search that's on there. And just so, you know, we've recognized in the past, there have been some bots that actually go and try and grab those photos and stuff up there. So, while they do have a lot of traffic, saying some of that traffic is bots that we've noticed over the years. So, we do our best to block some of those, but some of them you can. But anyways, that kind of gives you the top three, and then, you know, it kind of goes down significantly from there as far as departments and sites. So, we kind of get into, why do we redesign? We're aged out, obviously, after 12 years. SharePoint, the platform we're on, as an external web platform, is end of life with Microsoft. Now, SharePoint is a product, still being supported, but mostly, and you see that for our internet, some of our other SharePoint resources inside, that's primarily, SharePoint's essentially a collaboration platform that we utilized in the past. It had a component that allowed for external web development. We took that about, well, as far as you could go, I guess you could say. And actually, it's been good to us. I mean, you can tell by the numbers on the website, it's hit a lot. A lot of people use it. And, you know, in our travels, you hear, "Hey, the website's outdated needs," and there's just as many that say, "Please don't change that. Everything's right where I need it." So, just as we get into these redesigns, especially with the changing, I guess, the changing tide and how websites are used, you know, back when this was designed, you crammed as much in a website as you could. You wanted to give them every bit of information you could ever give them. And what happens over time is we end up with a very bloated site with, quite frankly, a lot of jargon and stuff that maybe we understand, but the general public may not. So, you see websites going to more of a, for lack of a better term, like a brochure or, you know, "This is the basic information. You want to know more?" It'll drill down into it or get them to the right resource for that. So, there's security concerns. Current infrastructure is on some older aging hardware, and the OS it runs on has some concerns for us. While we do have this separated in a DMZ outside, there still are connections to the inside network, which we have to watch closely on that outdated infrastructure. It's not mobile-friendly. One of the redesigns about 2010, 2012-ish area was we tried to get a little more mobile or device-friendly, got as far as we could with it. SharePoint's just not that platform to do that. So, and we've run on that since. And again, like I talked about, kind of the changing tide, improve content organization, and that's a lot of the work going on and just the vast amounts of content we have in there, really improving content organization and navigation to be. And again, a lot of that is to get more mobile-friendly. Resources. So, we've got a couple of web developers in IT. We've got a project manager keeping an eye on things and certainly herding our cats. Communications and marketing, I can't say enough, and the board and the county has done in my time here. It is a welcome sight to see that group added to the county. I think all of you are very aware at the impact they can make on telling Pinellas County's story. What you may not know is their involvement even on the web projects. So, when I talk about these vast amounts of content, they're going through that stuff page by page, and it's vast. It's a lot of work. I think we probably underestimated that from the start, the amount of work involved in that. But it's going to be time well spent in that. And James and his crew have just done a phenomenal job in two ways of really taking that on and learning the new platform. So, they've had to learn a new platform as well. So, Acquia has been our consulting partner since the beginning. Again, Drupal developers, we're developing, as I'll go into here, on a new platform called Progress. So, a lot of this started with, we did an evaluation of should we continue to house our web infrastructure here in our data center? Just about with any system you see at the county now, IT does that, especially if it's going to be something new. We do that kind of evaluation to say, is it in our best interest to go to the cloud with this, or is it in our best interest to keep it here? You'll always hear that the cloud is cheaper. Honestly, we haven't seen where it's cheaper by any means. So, but there's other things you can consider, integrations and some other services, external services, that might make it, that, you know, might swing the pendulum to cloud services. The new platform is in the cloud on a platform called Drupal. Drupal's used in a lot of public, well, a lot of big websites. It's an open-source platform that was selected because of its use for these types of sites. And really, we're seeing, you know, the support on the developer end with open source in the community that they can tap into there seems to share a lot better. When you're relying only on Microsoft's support, that can, well, quite frankly, it can be a bit of a burden. So, Phase One of the project, and let me back up, and this is not on there. So, our Intranet, as you see it now, is essentially our pilot on the new platform. We developed that, and the reason we went that route was, let's get familiar with the platform the best we can, kind of prove that out in the new platform, make sure that was the right decision. Everything worked out pretty good there. So, we went into and kind of utilize and share, since we're in the cloud, we can share some, what we thought at the time, a lot of the design concepts between the two and make them very familiar. As we move forward into the external site development, there were fewer of those used than we initially thought, but you'll see some are used. So, Phase One, $357,000, that engagement has ended and essentially went through a whole bunch of design under the hood. And what you really don't get in our website is it is huge. When you're talking about these searches and some of the stuff in the databases behind them, significant design and connectivity behind that. While the interface may look pretty simple, there's a lot going on behind the scenes. So, a lot of design and kind of scoping out what that would, what that development would look like, especially since you see that, you know, some of the most-used services are searches and some of that stuff that the county puts out. So, those, we have to get those right. Part of that scope was develop the first, most visible, and some degrees, complex sites. So, actually, we wanted to go right at sheriff, Cessor, you know, some of those searches and some of those things, which is what we did in Phase One, and begin work and try and, well, some of the searches were completed in that, but begin work on those big ones and get those rolling. So, that's essentially Phase One. And here, I've just got up a couple of, you can see the similarity between the Intranet and a couple of screenshots here, and you see Board of Supervisors is kind of on the bottom there, sorry, but kind of some homepages and some pages that might be seen where users can begin their navigation through this. And again, designed very much in a mobile platform that is much more mobile-friendly. That's another thing that really, when you're developing, especially on this platform, is you're kind of developing two sites. You're developing your traditional kind of PC or desktop-type site or browser site, and then there's a certain amount of work that's just done for the mobile. So, you're kind of doing it twice as you're going along. you're kind of doing it twice as you're, as you're going along, so. Get right in. And yes, please do ask questions.
Yeah, thank you, and, and I will. I just have, I, there's, as I'm looking at this, go back to that other slide. Is that where we're headed insofar as the look itself?
Well, th- this is probably the, the main look or main layout where the navigation starts. And then, like a lot of mobile sites, you'll see there'll be a, a, the little menu symbol where you can pull down and drill down into more. But these pages would scroll down to, to more content below them, absolutely.
Okay.
Yeah.
And in the beginning of your presentation, which is something that I've heard for years since I've been in this office, and this is something that's been, something that I personally have had a desire to see some major changes on our website, to where it's more, um, accessible and more manageable, but it's more user friendly. And so as I'm looking, that's one of the reasons why I requested that we, you do this, is to give us some timeframes and things of that nature, where we're at.
Right.
And, and even some of the costs that we've been spending on this thing.
Right.
Uh, we've dumped a lot of money into this so far, and looking at some of those things, where we at on all of this? I guess that's where part of, with the presentation of what I was really after more than anything else.
Right.
With some timelines.
Yep. No, and, and I've got some, some timelines and some dates in here, Supervisor.
All right.
For sure, but, um, no, I, I, I'm with you. And again, if, if, if it were up to us, and, and again, sitting back and looking at something, um, as large as this, until you really start peeling back the onion, this thing is, is vast.
It's been five years.
Yeah. Oh, yeah, absolutely.
Okay, that I, that I've been here, that this is something that I've, I've asked and requested for over five years, and, uh, we're not even there yet.
Right.
And that's what's the parts frustrating and has been frustrating for me.
Sure. Challenges, um, certainly the whole time with, with the resources we've got, uh, managing current website needs, because our business never stops. Uh, it, it keeps going, and, and while we've had to beat back a couple of requests, uh, we've tried to fill some of these. Again, in the middle of this, uh, COVID came in, which, which kind of, we've got to get resources off and get COVID resources up on our current platform. Uh, there was some work there, uh, but again, the, the business and the machine, uh, never stops, uh, rolling. So managing, hey, maintaining this while to a, some level of minimum so that we can concentrate on the development and keep going, um, certainly was a challenge. Uh, the new platform was some significant training with staff. Again, they're, they're working and have lots of experience on our current platform, going to a new one. That was some significant training. User acceptance training, so the way the, the development worked on this is we had a, a rather large development team, uh, on the consultant side, that would, uh, take off and go through these sprints of development, and then send that to our folks for some user acceptance testing. With all of the other things going on, we did get behind in user acceptance, uh, testing, especially, uh, from the outset, uh, did eventually catch up to that. But that was one of the challenges we saw right out of the gate, was just the sheer volume coming from the, the developers for us to, uh, uh, test and keep going. The volume of the content and reviewing and the creation, uh, of new content for the, uh, for the site is, is vast. So this has, uh, been a lot of work, uh, with, uh, James and his staff. My folks are generally, for the most part, doing, uh, the development, uh, coding. James and his staff have, uh, really taken the lead on content, uh, refinement, uh, review, refinement, all of that. So again, with, uh, the many things they've got going on as well, uh, trying to move that along, and they've, they've been absolutely great, and they're doing some great things, I think, with our content. It's time that that gets really, um, reviewed and kind of, uh, uh, again, reviewed and put into, uh, a new content organization, um, and navigation, so. Uh, moving forward, phase two, uh, looking into this month, early February, um, got the quotes on that, 270,000, uh, to get us 12 additional sites and complete the work on those big searches, uh, make sure those are solid. Uh, and there's a large platform update, um, that, uh, that will occur in that. It's a 16-week engagement. The plan is a targeted launch of the site, uh, approximately week 10 of that, that's what we're, we're targeting. Um, and, and some of that is we want the, the consultants and, uh, some help, uh, you know, kind of post-launch and have them here in case there is any, um, uh, immediate needs through that. And then, uh, we continue adding sites. Again, at that point, we'll be at about, uh, you know, 18 to 20 departmental sites. Uh, if you think about it, there's a lot of other, and they're much smaller sites, they're much easier to deploy, uh, moving forward, which will use our web source, resources, uh, to, to finish that development, um, after, after the, the engagement ends, uh, on phase two. One thing we're looking at coming up in this budget year is, uh, probably, and, and again, the, our, our current bloat and our current state of, of web and our inability to probably keep up with the times, um, uh, really gets down to that, you know, James and I have had some conversations on, you know, more active involvement on content management all through the year, not just stopping every once in a while when we do a page to, to do some content, but that needs to be, um, kind of continually combed through. So we're, you'll probably, uh, see in this upcoming budget, some, uh, some addition, some request to add, to add some resources for, uh, kind of continued management, uh, just so we don't get into this spot again where we're having to redo something that's 12 years old and there's all this bloat. And, uh, quite frankly, the, the, the need to stay a little more agile on development, being able to respond to the needs of the county, to, hey, we need this new thing up, we need it up quick, um, uh, and, and changing, changing technology needs throughout that, additional integrations, things like that. So, um, moving forward, that's, that's the plan so far. And let me just, you know, kind of speak to the, we have, uh, certainly, uh, actively working on redesign four to five years, to your point, Supervisor Goodman. There were, um, quite frankly, some years there where there was no budget appropriation to really move it forward, but planning, some, some planning did continue, uh, internally. We, uh, utilized some of the core culture teams and stuff like that to get a review and, and get some feedback, um, from our users and what feedback they have heard from the public, uh, things like that. But yeah, it's probably been in the last, uh, two and a half years that we've had some, uh, some funding to really try and step on the gas on this. And that's what we're trying to do here at the end, is, is keep our foot on the gas, get it launched, and, uh, keep moving forward, so.
We do electric cars now. Now it's just on the pedal, no gas.
Oh, just, yeah, it's true.
So, Mr. Chair. So Steve, when you, when you, your timeline there is, did I read that right, 10 weeks?
Ten, ten weeks to the launch completion, though there'll still be some sites to spin up after that, which will do internal, with internal resources. But the idea is, is with a, with a total 16-week engagement, we're, we're targeting to launch in week 10 of that engagement, yes.
Which is 10 weeks this year?
Yes.
Okay.
Yes.
And that was, excuse me, that was like 20 departments, you said, something like?
Yeah, that, that'll get us, well, especially the top, the very big ones, and all those big searches and all of that, um, a few others. Naturally, Board of Supervisor pages and some of the more visible and more complex pages, um, uh, we wanted to get done first with, with those and then continue on through the, I, I mean, when you, when you look at the website, I mean, IT has a site on the internet, which, really, we're an internal service department, we should, you know, we shouldn't be in that first wave of, of things, we're not as, uh, in other words, a lot of our services don't go to the public, they go to, um, internally. Our presence should be more on the Intranet and, and things like that. So it's those kinds of departments we probably, uh, uh, are pushing till the end. Their content is really pretty slow, we might still have a small page on the internet, but really as far as services of what my shop provides the public is, is very small. We're providing that service to, uh, to county departments, so. Things like that, we're waiting, waiting till the end, um, so. But yeah, if that, uh, happily, happy to ask, answer any more questions.
Supervisor Kavanaugh.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I, early in your presentation, you had a, an, an analytics page. Can we access that analytics page? Is that, was, that wasn't a Google Analytics, that was internal, is that correct?
Uh, no, that, I believe that's from Google Analytics, yes.
Okay, and so is that something we can just access, or that we have to log in? You'd have to have a login?
Yeah, it, it's a login. We, we can get you the, the, basically you can run reports out of it, we can absolutely get you reports out of that, sure.
Yeah, that might save some time.
The, the reports are a lot longer than what I've got up there, I just wouldn't be able to see anything. I just kind of clipped out the, the top part of that, especially the page where, uh, the top departments and things like that, where was it at?
All right, and you mentioned someone using bots to grab pictures or information off the website. So could you explain that just a little further? What benefit is it for a person to use a bot to grab a picture or information off the website, and how is that used?
Oh, well, uh, exactly what they use it for, we don't know. We just, um, we noticed a lot of traffic in, in two areas from it hitting our network. We can certainly see something is just hitting our network every, you know, second and a half. And then we can kind of do some identification from there, and we just knew it was a bot. We knew they were grabbing the photos from the inmate search. Again, these are, it's public, you know, it's public information anyway, so it's, it's, uh, what they're doing with it, I couldn't really tell you, it was just a bot grabbing that. Uh, we've seen that happen in a couple other spots, but there's, there's places we can, kind of stop that activity or, or curtail it a little bit, but, uh, on that particular one, it's, it's tough. When it comes up on that search, um, it's just, it basically screen, screen grabbing those photos, bam, bam, bam. So you'll see very high numbers for that, uh, particular search.
And I think you sort of covered it, and it came to mind, what level of ongoing support will be required once the, once you're, you've completed all the web pages? Will we be required to fund ongoing outside support, aside from hosting?
Not anticipated at this time, uh, we think, but however, there, there probably will be the addition of one additional developer. And then, you know, in, in, uh, in James's shop, just the sheer volume of keeping up with that content, maybe some, some, like a technical writer-type staffer, content management, uh, staff in his shop. Uh, the, these two, these two groups are gonna, gonna become closer and closer together, because certainly with communications and marketing, the web is a big tool for them. So, um, yeah, we, we see that, uh, those two teams becoming, uh, if not, if not one, very close, uh, working on a regular basis.
So you're looking, oh, go ahead.
I'm sorry, a couple more, that's all right. So Josh Franklin, uh, contacted, um, I think IT, is that right, Josh? About putting a link to our event. And so the event's in, in Feb, late February, and so, under our current platform, we, there's no time to put our event on the website that's upcoming in, in February. Will there be a way that we can simply manage our own page a little bit?
Yeah.
How will that work?
That, that's another, uh, aspect, and, and actually, feedback we got very early on in the planning process was departments having, you know, more ability to go in there. We, we have a web editor program now, uh, where, where departments, again, it's a, probably a, an hour or two, uh, sit down with, with some of our staff, and it allows them to, to essentially change content, uh, within the current platform. One of the reasons and some of the, it takes a lot of planning to actually get and broaden, broaden your, uh, your field of editors. Um, it kind of, kind of what you're doing with that is you're kind of putting some lane lines so that you don't get a site or someone spinning off and breaking something, but allowing them to, to manage, uh, their content. Because traditionally, IT, we're not the content experts, in other words, we don't know your business. So yeah, part of that is, is absolutely to have, uh, in-department editors, and sometimes we suggest two, because we've trained many and then they've ended up leaving, and then we've got to train another one. So, you know, having two and, you know, so you've got one that does it and one is a backup is a good idea.
All right, thank you.
And, um, to your point on the link, putting a link on the current website should take a few minutes. I would, yeah, re, reach out to me, I think we can get that done. For, for an event in February, we can, we can get that done.
Okay.
So I just, just say, but you're looking at constant updating instead of this, wait 10 years and update, so that we can keep, just keep up with everything?
Yeah, and, and we've tried in the past over the years, again, I've had that team for, uh, for a number of years. Um, you know, we've tried going out to the departments with the developers and saying, you know, what do you want to update? And they, you know, to their credit, they don't, um, un, unless they get some feedback that something's not working or out of date, they're looking at it and say, no, that's exactly what we want to say. But, but again, that's where having some content writers, some folks, uh, that, that actually craft content, uh, to be a little more informative. We, we've just found, and you look through our website, you'll see there's a lot of technical jargon in there that most people don't understand. So, um, having that kind of constant, and, and we'll actually start routing web requests through James's department to, to, hey, let us help you craft that page and, and get that. So that, that's part of the plan as well, is kind of rerouting who sees it first and what, you know, how the content gets written before it ever gets put up there.
Sure.
So.
Just like an update of a brochure?
Yep, absolutely.
Less, less words, more pictures?
Yes. And, and you see that as a trend, it's more of a, websites are more of a brochure now than...
It's been that way for years.
Yeah.
My business was that way. If I put too many words on there, nobody read them. Fine, just give a picture, oh, look.
Oh, yeah, absolutely.
Unless it's my mugshot, and then it's like, kills it all.
Yeah, I know.
But, uh, if I might, you know, um, you, you mentioned earlier about budget, and I guess that's important, that, that unless we know there's a need, this is something that we've had from some of our other departments and even some of our elected officials, unless we know there's a need to help facilitate some of our strategic plans that we have, we don't, we can't do anything about that.
Sure.
And so one thing that's vital in a budget process is that you guys come forward here and tell us what you're gonna need, and then we can look at it and evaluate it and determine whether or not, from that perspective. But unless we know there's a need and what that's going to be, and so that you can meet those strategic plans that we've already established, and that we continue to make changes in those strategic plans, we can't do anything about it.
Sure.
So we need you to come forward, and this is a message not only for you, but for all departments, that we look at this, we give direction as a board here where we need to go, and it's up to our department heads and individuals and our other elected officials as we're going forward to try to determine, okay, where we're gonna, what do we need financially in order to, uh, obtain these goals that we've set?
Sure.
And to your point, that's what budget management is doing now with the analysts.
Correct.
Going out to all the departments and talking to everyone.
Yeah, yeah. No, this has been on the budget radar for some time, which you understand from a department director point of view, is we can, we can bring, bring forward the hopes and dreams, the budget reality in some years is we can't do that now, let's, let's push that off another year. And if, if you rewind about five years, we were in a different financial situation at the time, so, um, but, but certainly, uh, uh, things are turning for the better now.
We just need to know what, you need to be able to plan ahead, we just need to know what you want.
Yeah, many times, yes.
Or need, actually, not just want, but...
Absolutely, and, and, and I, I'm just being very honest, this, this project ha- has been a challenge. I mean, it is, it is, we knew it was going to be significant, large, uh, take some great effort, um, and then, once you dive into it, and, and let's face it, we've all, uh, the, the challenges of the past year hit us all. Uh, I'm not going to blame a single bit of the, the, our, you know, getting behind on COVID, because we, we should have kept up with it better, we should have anticipated, especially the level of, of development that was going to come our way for user acceptance testing. Uh, I think we've adjusted to that, and we've got a better handle on it now. But out of the gate, it, I'm just being honest, it kicked us in the mouth, so.
Supervisor Miller.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, to Supervisor Goodman's statement that, you know, I, I think it's more like, we, we can do it if we know you need it. In other words, I, uh, so, uh, and then to the strategic plan, if I remember right, uh, really, we shot a lot of emphasis... really, we shot a lot of emphasis to security. I think that has been one that has rise to the top in the IT needs almost more than anything. But anyway, again, you know, you need to to communicate with us on maybe on more a specific level when we're working on those strategic plans. So anyway, just my just my thoughts and my comment.
Sure. Chairman Supervisor Miller, you're absolutely right. And if you look at that strategic plan across all of those those objectives that are in there, IT or the website, I'll bet touches over half of them. When you think about ultimately the especially some of the objectives and and what the end result of that objective was to be, a lot of that hits a website in some fashion or form, or or some sort of system. Yeah.
Supervisor Kavanaugh, I think you have a question.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. As I recall, we allocated about a million dollars for this project. Is that right?
No, last last fiscal, there was 357,000. And then going forward, we've got we've got the 270,000 already for Phase Two. So no, I don't recall an allocation of of a million dollars.
I thought it was 10,000 pages at 100 bucks a page.
I'm not I'm not recalling any of that, but.
So at 357,000 so far, what percentage of total completion does that put us? See, my concern is, this is expensive.
Sure.
But but when it comes to feeding off the government trough, the contractors will always be there, and it's an unlimited paycheck. And that's it. It concerns me that in almost every area, we're over time and over budget. So where where does this percentage wise put us at 357,000?
An estimate, when you look at everything that was developed, especially all the the heavy duty stuff that gets used a lot, I think we'll be at over 80% completion at the end of Phase Two, because that was all the hard stuff. That was all the tough stuff. What's remaining is much smaller page development, which which we can roll out rather swiftly after that. An estimate, Supervisor Kavanaugh.
All right, thank you.
Any other questions? In that case, thank you, Mr. Fraser.
Thank you, gentlemen.
Thank you, Steve.
All right. Number three, presentation regarding information pertaining to COVID-19, our favorite subject, treatment, plan, coverage, and procedures to receive this care. Mr. Tracy and Danielle Watkins, welcome.
Thank you. Good morning, Mr. Chairman, Board Members, Executive Team, Randy Tracy, Interim Human Resource Director. Good morning, everybody. Last month, there was a request by this board to bring some information concerning monoclonal antibody treatments. The way it was framed, I wasn't present, but the way it was framed is how it relates to our self-funded trust and our plans. So I'll keep it fairly succinct. There's not a whole lot to to share other than just what we know at this point. I did provide just a little bit of a background on what that is. All current plans through Banner Aetna support both monoclonal antibody treatments, oral antiviral therapy options for eligible covered patients. These treatments will be issued under the guidance of a physician either in or out of our network. We will be they will be provided an approved in and an approved treatment facility. Unfortunately, due to a shortage of treatments, referrals have been suspended until additional supplies is available. That was effective December 29. So a chart was issued to all doctors. We actually actually got our hands on it that basically gives the level of priority as to how that's going to be administered. So this was distributed to physicians across the state. It's not available, and as this thing continues to develop Omicron and so on, the effectiveness of those treatments are are now being questioned. So this is a moving target. When we started doing research to bring it here, several things changed even by the time we could even get it on the agenda. So right now, each treatment will be have will have an employee cost share that is designated by their particular plan. So if it's high deductible, PPO, EPO, there is a copay, but it is available if it's prescribed, and if they have a facility to administer that. The situation continues to develop. I just talked to Tasha Spears, Dr. Tasha Spears, and she confirmed that this is an evolving situation on a daily basis. They've already had like five communications in the last two weeks about this. So but more importantly, to the point that I understood that the question was, is do our plans cover it? Under those conditions with a described prescribed by a physician, it would be covered.
Supervisor Miller.
If I may, and because I think I'm the one that asked for this question.
Yes, sir.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. But we don't know, I guess we don't know what doctors believe in using therapeutics or not. So I mean, that will be between the patient and the doctor in their separate consultation. I'm curious about the the chart you have there, because what has developed of late is the triage for treatment for for COVID of late has turned to more of a I'll just say it, color of skin that they have put out there that that it's not necessarily the severity or your situation, that there's there's a movement to to change that. So I'm very concerned about I'm very concerned about the lack of availability of these treatments, very concerned about what might be the policy going forward, the discussion that's being presented to the public. I can tell you what, two years ago, when all this started, the previous director Shawna, and I can't think of her last name, but anyway, before, what was it?
Mick Isaac?
Yeah, Mick Isaac. Thank you. You know, I flat asked her. I said, this is not going to go away, is it? And she said, no, it will never go away, and it's never going to go away. And I don't understand why just even society as a whole has not demanded that we focus our efforts on 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 treatment, on therapeutics. Because, I mean, frankly, COVID was here before COVID became a thing. I mean, we've dealt with it in the cattle and sheep business for years. It's a it's a it's not unknown to man. So I think whoever has been responsible for the gain of function did a fantastic job. Because this thing is mutating by the hour. And so anyway, I really want to make sure that if there are therapeutics, if you have a doctor that that will prescribe that stuff, and again, whether it's available, it's not available, that's a separate issue, but we should have the opportunity to to get them if if at all possible. That's where I was going with it. That's really been my concerns. And we'll see what happens here in the future.
Supervisor Goodman.
Along that line, is that something that we can do? I mean, as far as help finding some of the investigation on what Supervisor Miller just said, I mean, is that something that we could take an active role in?
I'm not sure. Marilyn, do you have any ideas on how we would involve ourselves with that?
I think that'd be through the Health Department.
I think that may be a bit out of our scope.
About Tasha.
Yeah, but how about, that's a good point.
Good morning, Chairman McClure, members of the board. Supervisor Goodman, I also don't have the answer to that, but, excuse me. With respect to our plans, our self-funded plan, we would, as they, Randy and Danielle, have done, continue to communication communicate with our providers and let them know this is an issue for our employees and their dependents in terms of what treatment is available, making certain that we are aware of it and that we communicate that, as well as the liaisons to our health plans are prepared to answer questions for employees with respect to treatment available, given their specific circumstances.
Okay.
So I'm sorry if that's not a
That's good. I mean, that's.
Complete answer that we can change the nature of what's out there, but we are acting to make sure what is out there is communicated and understood.
Okay.
If we could send a memo, excuse you, Mr. Chairman.
Sure, go ahead.
If we can send that memo to all of the peoples that participate in our plan, that, you know, it's something that we that we expect, I guess, would be good. I don't know if I have any, I don't know if it'll have any weight, and and I don't know where our Health Department and Tasha is on this. I mean, I I don't know the the path in which those those antibodies could be brought to to light, but it seems that they do go to health departments in some parts of the country. So I don't know. There's a there's a lot going on out there. But again, we need to, this country needs to pivot to therapeutics going forward. I'm sorry.
Miller for president? Is that what we're?
You don't want me as president.
Any other questions?
Mr. Chairman, to to Mr. Supervisor Miller's point, there was an emergency use authorization for Strovot Imab.
Spit it out.
Best I can do. It's a monoclonal antibody and to treat moderate mild to moderate COVID-19 and so on, so forth. And in the very language that Supervisor Miller referenced is right here, I've got it highlighted. And so the concern is we're you know, we as a government NTR, are we focusing on treatment for people who need it based on the need, the the timing? And so on, those with comorbidities, and and it is a great concern that there are other factors used other than treating a disease, you know, treating an emergent disease and applying these therapeutics by race or something. That's 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 un-American. Does our does our health policy cover the remdesivir that we've heard so much about? Do you know that?
Mr. Chairman, I want to introduce Danielle Watkins. She's our newest Division Manager over Benefits and Wellness. She's recently taken over all of the COVID tracking, and she receives this contact daily. So I want to see if she has some information with your permission.
Sure. Welcome.
Thank you, Supervisor McClure, Chairman Supervisors Team. Thank you for having me. Pardon me. I am the Human Resources Team Division Manager for Under Benefits and Wellness. So thank you for having me today. The executive authorization for the Regeneron, I believe, is what they're currently supporting. It's a merit or it's through Merrick. We are, at any time, an individual states that they are not recovering, they have additional medication needs, they are contacting contacting their physicians, and they were getting on a referral list. They did temporarily suspend the referral list due to the shortage of supplies available. Once those do become back available, the lists were being reactivated, so the physicians were being notified as soon as they put them essentially on a waitlist.
And if I may interrupt, the the supply shortage of the monoclonal antibody?
Monoclonal and the oral antiviral.
And the oral antiviral is?
Right now, they're just calling it an oral antiviral. They didn't give a specific category or title name.
Okay.
So those are part of our network. They are they are being shared out on the Banner Aetna page so that you can log in there at any time and receive additional information for what's supported and covered. If an employee does contact us and let us know that there's additional needs as far as what's going on with their family, we are referring them to please seek medical advice or guidance so that they can receive the best care possible, as we're not the specialists for that department. Like Randy Tracy's indicated earlier, Tasha has been, from the Director of Health and Public Health, she has been sharing information with her team, making sure that individuals are aware of changes coming down the line so that we can kind of get ahead of what's coming down from the health departments in general, and then address those concerns with our our team members over there in the with Banner and with CBIZ, which is our coordinating for care.
So good. So what I'm hearing is yes, is the answer. Whatever's out there, you can get. That's that's what we're hearing.
Yes, in general.
If it's available.
If it's available, as cases come down, we're actually getting weekly updates for what's available, what's supported, what's new, what's FDA emergency use approved and other such items.
Great, thank you. Any other questions?
All we can do from here.
That's it. Okay, well, thank you very much, Danielle. Thank you, Mr. Tracy. Item number four, another fun subject, presentation and update on redistricting process and recent IRC maps. Mr. Quest.
Chairman McClure, good morning, members of the board. On behalf of county staff and county management, this morning, I wanted to provide the board with with a brief update on redistricting and provide the board with notice of some upcoming dates in the redistricting process. As you've probably heard or read about, on December 22, the IRC, or Independent Redistricting Commission, approved preliminary congressional and legislative district maps. These are not the IRC's final maps, though. The maps will not be finalized until they are certified by the IRC, which will most likely occur on the January 18 IRC meeting. That being said, the maps that the IRC has provided the county, at this point, any changes to those maps are almost certainly going to be very minor in nature relating to election accommodation type changes. Accordingly, county staff has begun the process of rebuilding the county's voter precincts, or election precincts, as we call them, around these preliminary IRC maps. In addition, county staff has started preliminary work on generating some potential Board of Supervisor district maps and a potential justice court precinct map. And those maps should be available within the next few weeks. As far as what else is on the the redistricting horizon, it's anticipated that on February 2, the updated voter precincts will be presented to the Board of Supervisors to you for your approval. Shortly thereafter, between February 7 and February 24, there will be community meetings, what we're calling them as district community meetings, held in each of the five supervisory districts, whereat members of the public can come in, view some of the potential maps, and make public comment. Some of the proposed potential BOS and JP precinct maps. Initially, or early on in this process, the at some earlier meetings or presentations on redistricting, we discussed the possibility of having two meetings in each district. However, given the tight timeframes the county is operating under and having to run an election this year, and the multiple delays from the census, and then IRC, county staff and county management is recommending that one meeting now be held in each of the five supervisory districts for a total of five of these district community meetings. So so please be reviewing your calendars now for that time period between February 7 and February 24 for some dates that you would be available to attend one of these meetings in your respective district. Once we have dates for those meetings, the county will post the dates, the times, the locations on the county's redistricting website. And for the benefit of the public, we've included here at the top that web address for the county's redistricting website where the public can obtain information, and some of the potential maps will be posted there once they're available as well. In the event a member of the public is unable to attend one of these public meetings, they also have a way of submitting public input to the county via email, and that email address is included on the slide as well, redistricting@panal.gov. Finally, moving back to the redistricting timeline. Finally, moving back to the redistricting timeline, after those, oh, wait, um, af, well, after those meetings are held in each of the districts, and, and I think we're gonna have to stagger those meetings so key staff can be present at those, but after those are held, it's anticipated that in early to mid-March, the final Board of Supervisor map, uh, the final Justice Court precinct map, uh, will be approved by the Board of Supervisors, uh, by you. And that's, that's the update on redistricting, uh, that I have for you this morning. Redistricting is, as you, uh, probably are, are well aware, it's, it's a, a team effort, there's lots of county departments involved, and I'm, I'm just kind of serving as a mouthpiece, there's a lot of work going on behind the scenes, some of the redistricting committee is present in the back, background, so we're working with county, county management, the Recorder's Office, elections, uh, county IT, so it's, it's an all-hands-on-deck, uh, effort, that's for sure, are, are there any questions for me or for any other staff members at this time on, on re, on redistricting?
I would suspect Supervisor Kavanaugh has a question.
That's right, thank you, so we're talking about holding public meetings, and how will we notify the public? Have you got a plan for how we're gonna advertise these meetings to the public?
That, I, I know we will be posting it on our website, which I provided, and I, I think there's gonna be further discussion on how we get out the word on, on those meetings. Supervisor Kavanaugh.
So, um, perhaps county management can answer, have we allocated any portion of the budget to send out mailers? Facebook is insufficient, the newspaper is insufficient, our website's insufficient for really public notices, because nobody looks at this stuff. So what, are we gonna take any proactive steps to notify the public?
Mr. Chairman, members of the board, good morning. Heman Shippatell, Deputy County Manager, uh, certainly, Supervisor Kavanaugh, we want to provide outreach as, as great as possible. Social media is gonna be one avenue, website, newspaper, but also being able to reach our rural areas that don't have that type of communication. Mailers could be an option, and we have resources available to, uh, to do that in terms of expenditures and stuff, so.
Okay, and we talked about one meeting per district, and I think District One is so large, we should consider two meetings, one on the eastern side and one on the western side, it's not reasonable to expect folks from Kearney to drive to, to Florence for that kind of a meeting.
Sure, we can certainly accommodate that in that timeframe that, uh, Mr. Quest indicated.
All set, thank you.
And Chairman, you know who I mean.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. For me, I, I'm curious about facilities, uh, large enough to hold crowds, because I gotta believe we're gonna probably draw a good-sized crowd, and if we need to really kind of start thinking about location and a facility that will be large enough to hold those things, so, certainly for District Three, if I can help, let me know, and, I mean, I have a couple ideas, but I'll let you guys get back to me on it. But I think that's, I think location, because of the social distancing and what have you, there's, there's still gonna be concern in, in that, and so I think we need large enough to hold a good-sized crowd.
Certainly, Supervisor Miller, uh, we'll work with your staff to facilitate and coordinate a facility that, that could accommodate a public.
Would live, would live streaming be possible in some of these, in some, in some venues, I think it would be, but.
Yes, um, our communication team will be involved, and so there's ways we can coordinate live streaming.
Any other que, any other questions? None?
No, I'm good. Can't wait, can't wait.
Reese, because it's moving so fast, a recent update just this morning, we'll be, we'll be coordinating with your, uh, staff to hold individual meetings next week so we can start having discussions with, with each of you on what staff is put, put together in terms of election precincts and BOS and JP.
That sounds good. No other questions, then thank you very much.
Thank you.
I would say nothing else is on the menu here, so we are adjourned.